This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone and open the City Council August 3, 2020, meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have one change to the agenda.
Okay.
The new business A, we no longer need that one on there because she can make that date. Just remove it, please.
Okay, anything else? Okay, would like someone to like entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the one change or deletion in the new business letter A.
It's Counselor Webb. I'll move to accept the agenda with the deletion of new business A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Counselor Wagner.
Thank you. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Ellen?
Aye.
And Counselor McNair is absent. Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. There are no presentations, I assume, tonight? I do not have a mayor's report this evening. There are none, Counselor Committee meeting reports that I'm aware of. Are there any topics from the floor tonight, Stephanie?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. No consent agenda for acceptance. Consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for July 6, 2020. City Council meeting minutes for July 20, 2020.
So, this is City Recorder Borst. I did make the correction to the City Council meeting minutes for July 6, 2020, as requested by Counselor McNair, and I have reviewed those with him, and he is satisfied with the addition.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept these two meeting minutes?
I'll move, Mayor. It's Counselor Ellen, that we accept the City Council meeting minutes for July 6, 2020, and July 20, 2020.
Thank you, Counselors. Is there a second?
Counselor Webb, a second.
Thank you. Do you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ellen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
And Counselor McNair is absent. Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business. And we'll go right to the B staff report work session list can be found on page 12 of your packet.
This staff report is brought to you by me, City Recorder Borst. I brought forward a list of work sessions that have been requested by council. As you see in the staff report, I wasn't sure if you guys would want to schedule them now with meetings being over teleconference, or if you would like to wait until we are in person.
I guess that Mr. Mayor cannot see me raising my hand.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would not mind postponing a decision as to when we want to hold these for a short period of time to see if things change, and we will be meeting in person in the next month to, or to. I don't think I want to wait too long to start looking at these, but I think I think some of them would be easier to do over video conference, and I think some would be more difficult to do over video conference.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wagner. Any other councils wish to discuss this? Have any concerns?
Counselor Webb, I guess we don't have anything on this list that is super urgent, so I think that request by Counselor Wagner is within reason. Another month or two. It's busy during the summer for most people, so of course, I'll be getting into hunting season in the fall. But I don't see any harm in that. If we had something urgent, I probably wouldn't want to put it off. Think we can work through these. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. I tend to agree with Counselor Wagner, and you also. Do you, JR, do you have any comments you'd like to make towards these work sessions?
No, I think, like stated before, first of October, we should probably start looking at them though if we can't get back in chambers.
I agree. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, are we precluded? Because we are going to be having some meetings. We just held a meeting in person. As long as we keep the numbers down, and our workshops, like, they are open to the public, but most of the time they aren't attended. So, does that preclude us from doing that? Okay, I've seen the head shakes now, so.
I think the minimum in a meeting like that is still 10 and under, I believe. Is that correct, Josette?
That's how I understand it.
Yeah. But we kind of need to. Is there any, one of these five topics that would warrant a in-person meeting, say, within the next month or so?
I, you're right, Counselor Webb, about the fact that we've had meetings in person and workshops are generally not attended by more than us and one or two staff. I personally, if we are going to have them in the next month or the soonest ones, and I guess we should talk about what priority to put these in, I think it's really important that we do the meeting minute preferences and the council priorities, and well, and council roles and responsibilities. All three of those, to me, are very critical.
Would you state those again? The meeting minute preferences? Counselor Wagner, and what else?
Council priorities.
Okay.
And council roles and responsibilities.
Okay.
So, the reserve fund policy and the rate review committee future, those just need to be done before the end of February, so that we put the budget in place with those policies, get those policies adopted through you guys, and then the rate review committee, if we're going to continue it, typically meets in March. It could also meet after the fiscal year starts, so we, February is the two R work sessions. If that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
I just rated them. I don't know. I just wrote a 1 through 5, and I had council priorities as 1, council roles as 2, meeting minute 3, reserve fund 4, and rate review 5. As far as, you know, priority to last priority.
Okay. Would anybody like to move? Do you think we ought to move forward? I know, I know the last meeting, the meeting minutes topic came up, and I remember a concern that, what I think Counselor McNair voiced is concerned that we ought to have something pretty soon on that. It's up to you guys what you want to do. Maybe you could take a, take a look at the top three that we talked about, and then take a look at, see where we are in another month with the COVID, and and go from there. How's that sound? Maybe in September, bring these up in order again? Or do you want to pick one and pick a workshop for one of them this month?
Counselor Webb?
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, staff, do we have any prep time? Stephanie, were you going to bring us something for different formats of meeting minutes, or are we just going to sit down and kind of hash out what we want? And I guess as far as the, all the council priorities, I'm sure projects, and that's pretty simple. You got those that you think. Council roles and responsibilities, are we going to have typical literature or something that needs to be put together?
Well, for council roles and priorities, we have the past ones that I think would be a good starting place for the, did I just mix two? For council priorities, or goal setting is what we called it when we were on council. We do have the old ones, which would be kind of a starting place to decide if those are still, if any of those are ones you want, so we could get that ready for you guys. It wouldn't take very long. I don't know what she was planning on doing about minutes or the other ones. Staff, did you have a plan?
It would depend on if you guys want me to bring some information from professionals or if you're going to trust my research. What kind of presentation are you guys wanting me to put together, is what I'm asking?
It's Counselor Webb. I'd imagine we trust your research. I mean, there can't be too much to this. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, Counselor McNair's issue around this was, you know, just how much detail we put in and more to when there's flavor to the discussion, that it's, that flavor is captured. And I find value in that, especially going back, looking to see why people made the decisions.
This is Stephanie Borst. I think I can come up with something. I'll bring you some examples of what different cities and kind of different scenarios of what those meeting minutes would look like, depending on how much detail you want in there, as well as what the professionals recommend be in meeting minutes. So, I can, I can put that together anytime.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Moving forward tonight, how does the, how does the council want to proceed with these work sessions?
We've got one absent member, so we don't even know if he's available, but he probably is.
Yeah. I may suggest. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, could I just propose that staff will table this and bring it back to you the first meeting in September to schedule them?
I think that'd be a good idea, Josette. You know, another month, we might have a better idea of what we're, what we're looking at as far as meetings. And how, how we're going to do them, so.
I'm good with that also.
That'll work for me.
Do you need a motion, Stephanie? No, just consensus.
I'm okay with it also.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds like we have a general consensus then to move on to, for staff to bring it back on the first meeting in September?
Yep.
Okay. Planning Commission renewal for Jeff Goodman.
So, I brought this letter to you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Stephanie Borst again. I brought this letter to you from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Jeff Goodman is requesting to renew his term for another four years. So, with, what we're asking for is consensus of council for the mayor to appoint him.
Counselor Ellen has no issue.
This is Counselor Wagner. I find Jeff to be a true asset to the Planning Commission. I was the commissioner when he came on board, and he learned quickly, and he has really dedicated himself, and I would really encourage the council to re-up him.
Counselor Webb is good. We'll re-appoint him.
Okay, so we have a consensus from the Renonia City Council, and it is my pleasure at this meeting in time to appoint Jeff Goodman for another four-year term to the Planning Commission. I would like to say, right, in his letter, right before he signed his name, he said, "Thank you for the honor of serving our city," so that says a lot about Jeff, so. Okay, staff report proposed organ building official rules, 14 through 34.
Okay, so this staff report is from me. This is Josette. So, I know that we had written a letter in the past because there was a House bill that the state was trying to pass to eliminate third-party contractors from the building inspection profession. So, that died. They're back at it again under this kind of Rules Committee, the Proposed Rulemaking Advisory Committee. And so, Northwest Code Pros, who's the third-party vendor that we use for all our inspections, is requesting that the different cities either have someone speak in person, which I know Klascanai's city manager is going to testify in person, or to write a letter from the City Council to be put into the written record of the hearing that's going to be held on Friday. So, I gave you guys kind of the entire packet of what they're going to be looking at and what they're proposing to do, the rule changes they're proposing to make. And then I also gave you a new draft letter that's similar to our old ones, but more relates to the rules they're changing now because it's not a House bill. It's just, they're just kind of going, not the legislative way, but going the rulemaking way to get this passed. So... Where is the letter? Did they not get the letter, Steph?
It's page 15.
Oh, it's the second page. I totally passed it, thinking of the rulemaking. Sorry, thanks, JR. So, are there changes or amendments? Are you uncomfortable sending a letter? What does council think about that?
I liked the letter, Josette. This is Counselor Ellen. It seemed good to me. I liked it. Only just one little typo in paragraph 2.
Okay.
City of Renonia is, it should be City of Renonia in the past.
Okay, let me find where, paragraph 2.
Right in the middle of paragraph 2, it says the City of Renonia. Then you got an is instead of in.
Oh, in the past. Okay, got it.
That was my only thing that I picked up on.
This is Counselor Wagner.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Wagner.
Brought to, so this is what I brought to the governor's, Jen. I'm sorry, what?
I don't think anyone said anything.
Okay, well, I heard Mayor Hobart start to say something, but I'll just continue because I didn't hear anything further. So, when I was, went down to the governor's mansion, met with her, I took advantage of getting to speak to her legislative analyst and lead about this. This is one of the things that Josette had brought to our attention that was a serious problem at that particular time. And I expressed the concern that we had and, and our, that was likely held by all of our equally sized communities regarding this. They were pretty well set on saying, basically, what you have to say means nothing, but of course, we'll bring it to the governor's attention, and thank you very much. My only concern about the letter, and I'm very sad to see this back, by the way. My concern about the letter, I'm not sure that it is as pointed when it comes to defining the fact that this is truly not looking at the reality of small and rural communities and their capacity to do what they're telling us. And, you know, the maximum of three, pardon, I mean, it's just, it's unreasonable, and it's an unconscionable request on behalf of the state, so. I think, Josette, you answered one question. You said that Klascanai is going to be there in person? And are all the other communities in Columbia County or across the state, you know, are they all really actively getting these letters in?
Yeah, so I know that Jack, who's the head of Northwest Code Pros, has three communities that are speaking, testifying in person. The rest of us are planning on sending letters from our city council.
And is the response?
What?
Sorry, has the response been really strong across the state?
Well, and we're just, Northwest Code Pros is just one third-party business. There are other businesses, and we're hoping that them and their clients are doing the same thing.
Okay.
One of the concerns is, this is really a slippery slope because what's stopping the state from making rules that then affect our contract third-party planning firm, or our third-party engineering firm? Anything we do where we can't hire the professional ourselves, are they going to just keep doing it till the city can't even function itself because it needs to hire all these employees it can't afford? I mean, that's how we do a lot of stuff. Because it works for small, smaller rural communities to, you know, everybody share, and there's one planner that travels to all these six small towns. Well, are they going to take that away? Then we're going to have to hire a planner for the limited amount of planning stuff we have? Kind of scary, but I didn't want to be too pointed.
No, and I agree.
Go ahead.
I know we went through this with planning several years ago, where they were wanting us to hire as a conglomerate, or, you know, getting together multiple communities, and the reality was, we, even if we wanted to, it wasn't working. I mean, there were discussions held, but nobody was cooperating, and everybody had a different idea about it. We talked about that with city managers as well. You know, is it possible to hire a city manager that's going to do Renonia, Klascanai, and whatever? And it just, that wasn't a reality. It was just not something was going, that was going to happen or work well. And my concern is, again, frequently, things that come out of Salem are very Portland or metro-centric. And this just reeks of that. And, and I just, I, it, like I said, it just overlooks the reality of what, how that's really going to work or not work. And I'll stop talking now.
Susan, would you like to testify in person?
Friday. I am in St. Helens, and if I don't show up in St. Helens, they're going to fire me or something, although.
Okay, well, that's not good. Don't lose your job.
Yeah, no, and I've already committed to Beverly Friday. So, normally, I would say, absolutely, I'd be there in a heartbeat if that was the desire of council, but it would be great if.
Well, I believe it's, I believe it's a call-in testimony.
Oh. Well, I will.
No one's going down there.
I would leave it to my fellow counselors to make that decision, and I don't know what time it is and if we're actually going to have that opportunity to speak, and if that. My concern is always, in this venue, it is an appropriate statement to make, those statements I made. Is that truly a statement that we are willing to say out loud as testimony in Salem based on the potential ripple effect or ramifications of our taking that heart of a lion?
Well, I know that Gray, Kingman, and Klascanai definitely said those words, if not stronger. So.
Well, I would be very happy if council wanted to come up with a script of a, of something, of testimony that we were wanting to present. something, of testimony that we were wanting to present. And I could, I don't believe I have any meetings scheduled on Friday, so I could probably That said, I think we should also do the letter.
Yeah.
Josette, this is Mayor Hobart. I, I liked the letter. I, I think it portrayed our, our true feelings on, on this, if matter. It was pretty obvious what you wrote and in strong opposition of the program delegation. And I, I thought it was pretty good myself.
This is Counselor Webb.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, I talked to the city administrator the other day, and maybe one point, maybe into the third paragraph, add some verbiage, verbiage around, you know, this, this doesn't help us meet our low-income housing goals. It's going to add building costs. It's going to, you know, the inspection cost and building cost will inflate because of this, if, if we're going to be forced into this scenario. So, I mean, it's just something to add.
Did you come up with a sentence, Dale?
Well, I scribbled down some stuff here at, you know, this proposed rule change is will increase costs for building and inspection and would not benefit our low-income housing goals.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what the format is for the meeting on Friday, to call in, if they just give you your two or three minutes to give your spiel. It would be nice to have somebody there to, you know, in case there's some back and forth with some knowledge there, what the impacts are going to be. And I thought I saw through this document, they're, they're wanting to look towards fiscal impact, and I, we, we haven't identified what it would be, but it'd probably be pretty huge.
Josette, didn't the email you sent out last week about this, this topic had all the information and the call-in and the data, their hearing and everything?
Yeah, so, page sixteen tells you who you need to email if you want to speak and who I would submit the written testimony to. And then, you need to cut, you need to answer those little, who you are, what's your organization, that agenda item, your comments related to it, any related material. And then, if you don't have a confirmation to your testimony, by eight-thirty, the day of the he, the day of the meeting, resubmit it. I don't know how that would work because eight-thirty and the meeting's at nine, but whatever. And fiscal impact is hard, hard, hard to come up with potentially because I have no idea what it would cost for those individual inspection, inspectors full-time.
Well, you could get rid of one police officer and one utility worker easily.
Right.
And probably still not pay...
Or a general building, yeah, and then electrician, and then what do you do with commercial? It's just, it's a nightmare.
Yeah, well, maybe you should be on there, Josette, and say those words.
Well, I can, I can call in if you guys think we just, you know, I can come up with something between now and then, and I at least was going to call in just to be part of the go-to meeting and hear what they're saying because it is a public meeting, but whatever you guys want us, want me to do.
This is Counselor Webb. I would think it would, I think it would be important, we have somebody on that phone call. Um, yeah, and you could, I mean, you can ballpark seventy-five to ninety thousand a year with your Pan Bennys for each one of those positions. You'd be lucky to probably get by with that, so, you know, that fiscal impact would be huge on this community. And, you know, you could sign up to give testimony and, but if everybody's already saying ahead of you, you could just go, you know, and just concur.
Yeah, okay. But still send the letter with the corrections and the changes.
Yeah, um, I, I'd like to look at the letter again, just to make sure that it really emphasizes the dramatic effect fiscally on us. The one thing I will tell you is that we have third-party inspectors that we have to pay for some of our projects. And even when they're local, he's charging us eighteen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred dollars per visit. And I know that if we hired him full-time, that's a huge chunk of change. I mean, it's, it's, it's just unreasonable for them to be requesting this.
Well, and really, they're just requesting it and not showing what is the benefit? Why is it a, what's problematic about it? Like, none of what they've submitted and nothing in the House bill ever laid out something that was understandable that showed the problematic issues with it. So, it's like somebody got a burr under their saddle.
Yeah, their argument was that, who's really making sure that these are being done correctly? That was their argument when I presented that to the legislative assistant or manager, whatever her title was. She said, you know, how do we know that they're doing it correctly and that the cities are really doing what they're supposed to do? And that seemed a very hollow and ridiculous argument to me.
Did you answer it with, how do we know you're doing what you're supposed to do? I mean, you could say it about anybody, any position, and, you know? And I went through that in our last one because the permit checking, the, the part that we require be filled out is all in-house, right? And the, and if somebody's not, you know, so, we help them fill out the, the forms of what they're going to be required to get. They pri, the building code prices it based on the square footage or whatever the different fees are, and then goes out and does all those inspections. So, we work really closely with them to make sure, and if something's awry, or we've got some concerned citizen saying they didn't pull permits or whatever, we're not just, that just doesn't go under, you know, and nobody looks at it. That's the whole goal, is that people would build things that are going to last out here and not just fall apart.
So, I concur with whoever suggested that we do both the letter and have either, have you, I'm, I'm fine with you making the presentation to, as live testimony. What I will tell you is that the reality is, whether they list or not is one thing, but they do wait in-person testimony differently. I won't say they, they rate it higher, but they do rate it differently because it's like, oh, somebody actually bothered to show up and do this. It's a little different thing with virtual meeting, but it does make a difference.
I agree with Counselor Wagner's perception of what makes a difference or more of an impact. I totally agree with that statement.
Josette, would you like to rewrite the letter with the additional comments and then email it to us this week before Friday? And Susan, Susan can look at it, or you could just send it Friday for Friday, I guess, but...
Well, I got to send it ahead, I got to send it by Wednesday, I believe, if I'm reading the, go back here. I think I just send it by Wednesday. I'm proposing to just fix the typo in paragraph two, and then, Dale, I almost think that your sentence fits better in paragraph four, where it talks about the advantage of third-party programs is that they provide consistent levels of service in an era where cities are looking to reduce barriers to housing. The low-income thing seems to work with that a little bit because we're talking about barriers to housing and low-income people, like, people building housing for low-income, that's a barrier. If it all of a sudden becomes cost prohibitive for some guy to build a fourplex, then he's not going to do it. He's going to build a McMansion, and there you go. What do you think? Do you want us to stay with this third?
Well, if it's in there somewhere, and, you know, it's, it's just going to impact the low-income housing because it's just going to impact the whole program for everybody. Everybody, our inspection prices are going through the roof if we have to do this. I'll, 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 you'd pay for inspectors, other than cutting, which is general fund money, you're cutting other jobs, but, so, I, I, I mean, you just have to put it on the housing cost. It's going to kill them.
So, do you guys feel like you need, does all of council feel like you need to see it again? Because I could do it tomorrow and send it back out.
I don't need to see it, Josette. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay.
I trust you.
I don't need to see it either. Go ahead, Counselor Wagner.
Uh, low-income housing versus affordable housing.
Okay, affordable. Do you want us to say affordable?
That, that's the, that is the trigger word of the day. And they're, they're pushing affordable housing and, and that. So, I, I actually like the low-income housing language, but I'm not sure that it is the correct term.
Okay.
Maybe they like to pre...
Josette, maybe in the, in the fourth paragraph that you suggested Dale's comment, in the second sentence, it reads, "In an era where cities are looking to reduce barriers to affordable housing and invest in economic development," that may take care of it. Just add affordable right in front of housing.
Okay. If you guys are all okay with that.
Yeah, that'd probably work.
Okay.
That work, Dale?
Yeah, it's saying the same thing.
Okay. I'm good with that. They preach, they preach affordable housing all the time, but it's forty-five thousand dollars in permits in Portland to build a house you already owned a lot on.
Right. Crazy.
Which is...
And it's not even SBCs.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Susan.
Well, that's okay. I, I'm not seeing exactly here, but in that sentence, would you also want to talk about, because you talk about the barriers, but something like the additional cost...
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, the additional cost of this would be unreasonable and unconscionable to try, you know, to charge people trying to build these homes, affordable homes. Or to provide housing for those least able to afford it, something, I don't know. But you're, you're a good word, Smith. You're probably better than me.
Okay, so, I'll tweak it tomorrow and send it out, and you guys, you guys can individually just send me back a thumbs up or something.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Josette.
Uh-huh. We chief, it, he does...
Is Chief on the line today?
He's not. His report will come next meeting. He had a personal thing, so he can't be on the phone tonight.
Okay. So, we'll move right to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2020-10, authorizing the lease agreement between the City of Vernonia, Vernonia Cares Incorporated, and Vernonia Senior Citizens Incorporated.
So, I do have a couple amendments. I sent you guys the amended lease in the email, so I can go over the few little tweaks we made. So, the two entities tried to go get insurance based on the lease language, and the lease language, on page, let me get there, page nine of the lease, section ten-point-one, was liability insurance. And in the first third of the paragraph, it says, "Additionally, the tenant shall obtain umbrella liability coverage in the amount not less than ten million dollars." So, when they took that to their insurance agent, it was cost prohibitive for them to the tune of like thirty-seven hundred dollars a year just for that policy for each entity. And so, when I called Ruben, because I said, you know, what's weird, I looked at our other leases tenants, and we don't have it with anyone. Nobody has that umbrella policy, separate from just the commercial general liability policy. And what we figured out was the ten million was related, so this lease was drafted prior to construction. So, the additional umbrella policy was if we were going to have a construction project happen, and they were the tenant. So, he was okay with changing, removing that requirement for the separate umbrella policy. And then, we tweaked the commercial liability policy to say, "The commercial general liability insurance shall provide, shall..." Okay, let me get there. I have two versions. Hold on, let me make sure I'm reading you the newest, uh, one that I just did. Okay, so, oh, no, close, I can see people's faces. So, the change in wording, I'm almost there, change to, "The commercial general liability insurance shall name the City of Vernonia as additionally insured and provide coverage of not less than two million dollars per each occurrence, not less than three million dollars aggregate." So, Ruben was okay with that, taking out the ten million and putting in the bigger aggregate and us being named additionally insured. The other change that was also related to construction was in section four-point-three, the section titled Restrictions Related to Insurance. And the old version says, "The tenant shall pay the full cost of landlord's fire and extended coverage policy within thirty days of billing by the landlord." That was for construction. However, what was missing that we figured out from that section was the requirement for the, two entities to pay the contract for the whole time they're there for fire monitoring. They have a, we have a wireless fire monitoring system there that will send signals to all the right people, and they are required to keep that contract and pay for it. So, section four-point-three now says that the tenant shall pay the full cost of fire mon... that the tenant shall pay the full cost of fire monitoring contract for the property, and that the landlord's maintenance of fire and extended coverage insurance does not relieve the tenant of any other insurance requirement of this lease, so. To keep all the insurances we're already requiring, and they're gonna pay for the fire monitoring contract. So those were the two changes that came out of the two entities trying to get their insurance. Are there any questions on it?
How much is the fire monitoring, Josette?
I believe it's $60 a month. They're gonna split it, so it's $30 a month for each tenant.
Okay, thank you.
With the changes from the $10 million down to the $2 million liability and $3 million aggregate, did that reduce that annual fee quite a bit for them, Josette?
Yeah, so it's, it's very similar to what they currently have. They're just gonna have to increase the aggregate amount, because they currently have the $2 million per occurrence already. So, yeah, they're looking at maybe less than $100 more than they're currently paying, and they'll be moving out of the building they're in, so it's really just transferring the policy. And as you saw in the beginning of the lease, we're not really requiring much of rent. We're requiring a maintenance fund payment, but they're kind of getting away, similar to the health center and the VCLC, with really miniscule rent, so as to give them kind of a good start to succeed there.
And they were able to be bound by WCS in Hillsborough?
Yeah, so one of them has Hillsborough Insurance, one has, one works with WCS but is under Cincinnati.
Okay.
So there's just different, yeah, different insurance firm, but LISA, I believe it is, at Hillsborough Insurance is who's working with, through WCS to get the policy drafted.
Good.
Yeah, so they're, they're just waiting for the policy to be complete and sign it, and then this to be signed, and then they can, uh... They're still planning on moving in this weekend, I believe.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Sandy, are you on this, still on here? I thought she was on the call earlier.
She is. She's just muted. Hold on.
I am on the call, yeah.
Hi, Sandy. This is Mayor Hobart. It sounds like good news. It sounds like you were able to work out with Josette a better, better price, and that's good news. I bet you're happy.
I am very happy, yes. And I appreciate Josette working with us on it.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. That's, that's the only comment I had for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
So...
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Josette.
Well, I was just saying, if there's no further questions or amendments, we could, you guys could, someone can make a motion to adopt.
Any council like to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-10, a resolution to authorize the lease agreement between the City of Vernonia and the Vernonia Cares Incorporated and Vernonia Senior Citizens Incorporated.
Thank you, JR. Is there a second?
This is Councilor Wagner. I will second that.
Thank you, Councilor. Would you take, call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor McNair is absent. Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number 924, 924, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia amending Title IX, Chapter IX, dash, zero, one.
This is an ordinance coming to you from staff. You guys had a public hearing at the last city council regular meeting, at which testimony was heard and council deliberated the ordinance. Staff is now bringing this forward for council to adopt if they so choose.
So this is Councilor Wagner. I have a question, and I know it's too late because we've had the public hearing. But I was concerned about the potential for ADA issues, based on the fact that they're going to, you know, are, is the building owner going to be required to make their building ADA accessible if they, for instance, move more to the second floor?
If they move what to the second floor?
Commercial space.
That would be up to the state building code.
Thank you. That answered my question.
I have a question. Mayor Hobart?
Go ahead, Councilor.
I thought this was gonna go back to the Planning Commission for Susan Wagner's concern about the minimal square footage instead of a percentage.
That is not what council decided at the last meeting. They were in favor of it being a percentage. Do you concur, Susan? Or Councilor Wagner?
Yes, we did decide to let it go forward with the percentage, the 49%. But I just realized there's a potential for, if you've got a two-story building, and they put 49% of the living space on the ground floor of the square footage of building, and put all of the commercial upstairs, so they would only have living quarters downstairs. I don't know if that's an issue that we need to be concerned about or not. But this is for only the general commercial zone, not for downtown zone.
Correct.
Isn't there some general commercial pretty close to downtown? Like the mortuary?
No. So let me pull it up here. I can tell you real quick. Hold on.
The shop on the corner by the blinking light is general commercial. The nice old house is general commercial. The property next to that is general commercial. Napa Auto Parts is commercial. And there's several, several other properties that are zone general commercial but are only used as residences, and they've been that way for, since before the code was adopted. So this would actually put those properties into legal conforming use where they are not that right now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, partly.
If they're gonna be grandfathered in, so they don't have to change to 49% at this point. But if...
They would if they changed from a sole residence to mixed commercial use. And only 49% of it could be used as a residence.
Okay.
Yeah. And really, there's only, of those properties that are Napa, right there on Bridge Street, there's none of them that are currently two stories. They're one stories elevated from the flood. Councilor Allen, did you have, did you get clarification, or?
Yeah, I was just kinda wondering where the map was. I hadn't seen the map of the actual commercial zone versus downtown zone, so I was just kinda wondering what all that encompassed. And do we know the plan of the proposed business? It's gonna be upstairs?
Yes, but that is not part of adopting this ordinance. They did, we did explain it at the last meeting, because the applicant did explain it to the Planning Commission, and then Matt did relay that plan. Based on their proposal, which, again, any of that could change. They wanted to do a downstairs cafe slash
So kayak.
Or where they would be renting out kayaks and stuff. And then they'd have a residence, and then upstairs, they were hoping to do like a bed and breakfast.
Okay, because I was looking up some of this in other cities, and the ones that did allow certain things in, in a commercial use, and like, they had a whole list of things that were not allowed. One of them was hotels.
That would not be a hotel, though. It'd be more of a... Well, I think bed and breakfast is in ours, actually. But that, that's not, I mean, if they don't meet the code, then that, they would have to change their plan on that one. I don't have Title IX before me, otherwise I could check for you.
Right. And is this, is this put forward by anybody in the real estate business, or is it just solely by the person interested in buying the place?
It was a private citizen who paid the fee with the city to request an amendment to the Title IX Land Use Code, and then it went to Planning Commission. They reviewed it, had a public hearing, passed it, and forwarded it to city council to go through the public hearing and adoption process.
Do you know how much that fee is?
It is $1,250, if I recall correctly.
Non-refundable?
Correct. They're paying for staff time to go through this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on ordinance 924?
Councilor Webb?
Go ahead, Councilor.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 924, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia amending Title IX, Chapter IX, dash, zero, one.
I will second that motion. This is Councilor Wagner.
Seconds been made. Stephanie, would you call roll, please?
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor McNair is absent. Motion carried. This is the first reading by Title Only if no counselor requests for the ordinance to be read in full. Hearing no request. This is the first reading of ordinance number 924, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia amending Title IX, Chapter IX, dash, zero, one, by Title Only. Do you guys want to do it all at this meeting?
I'm fine with that.
So Mayor Hobart?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, in order to do so, you have to ask for another motion.
Okay, I'd like to, after the first reading, and I'd like to ask for a motion to pass the ordinance 924.
Councilor Webb? I'll move to adopt ordinance number 924, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia amending Title IX, Chapter IX, dash, zero, one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Allen, second is the motion. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner? Sorry, Councilor Wagner, we can't hear you. Okay, I'll come back to Councilor Wagner. Councilor Webb?
Aye. I think she said she's got some slow internet there.
Oh, Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner? Can you give me a thumbs up?
Are you asking for me?
Yes, yes, okay. That was an affirmative. Councilor McNair is absent. Motion carried. Would any counselor request that this ordinance be read in full? Hearing no such request. This is the second reading of ordinance number 924, an ordinance of the City of Vernonia amending Title IX, Chapter IX, dash, zero, one, by Title Only. This ordinance is adopted and will become active in 30 days.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Apologize to everybody. I'm having glitches in internet.
Stephanie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Do you need another motion to, on the second reading?
Nope, that was already done. We are good to go now.
Okay, we're good to go. Okay, thank you. Susan, are you there?
I am here.
Okay. I heard you anyway, so there's no, we're moving on to correspondence, which there is none. And we're moving on to items from the mayor, councilors, and city administrator. I do not have anything to add tonight. Any concerns from the council? Any...
I have something, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I'd like to relay that the paving up here on Arkansas looks nice, and I'm sure the people that live on it appreciate it. I did have one comment. I was hoping Josette could clarify. Are they gonna add gravel to the abrupt edges?
Yeah, so they're working on that. They were over here off First Street doing that. So it's all, they're coming that way. But they were doing River and Umatilla today.
Okay, thank you.
Back later.
I'd also like to, I'd like to commend our mayor for the cover he's building over the monument down there. It's really looking nice, and he's working hard on it. So good work, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Still working... Thank you, Counselor. Still working progress, but, um, hoping by the end of August, I'm going to have my bench in there and the reader board put back and, and, uh, it all complete. So, um, thank you for that comment. Appreciate it. Any other discussions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, so Oregon wasn't originally on the plan to pave. So how did we accomplish that, Josette?
Uh, we actually used our own contract services money.
Okay.
Because what we found out is the bids came back low, different than we thought they would, different, a lot different than last year, probably something to do with oil prices being in the tank, but, and you are allowed to switch or add a street, but you have to go through an amendment process. So if we were to have done the amendment process, Five Star would have demobilized and would have had to mobilize again to come back and do Oregon to use the funding for the, from the grant. You have to have their permission before you do an additional street, which we didn't have at the time. So that's why we used our own contract services streets money. Like we had spoken about Dale, um, in the future, potentially what our plan would be is to overshoot the amount of streets that we apply for. And then if the bids come back high, you drop a street off. But you never, ever get into this situation again where you don't use all the money. The other thing that might be kind of a blessing in disguise is they were requiring us to put in ADA, um, accessible approaches on River and Umatilla, the sidewalks that are above the streets. And we have not yet finished paying for those. And we're a little worried they're going to come back a little high from what we had estimated, just because of the amount of dig out and prep. So I think we're going to ultimately use most of the grant funding through using them for that. Um, but yeah, in the future, we need to over apply and then just come short of what we actually accomplished, but use every penny of their money.
It's so on that.
First time it ever came in low.
Yeah, I mean, that catches us off guard. Um, so does it sound like we can, we can over subscribe our street amount and then they'll kick back to us early so, uh, that would, that we would know if they're not going to okay for those streets and, and then we wouldn't have to go through that. We'd have to go through the amendment process, but it'd be in time that our contractor wouldn't have to be mobilized. It was only because of this year we were so late.
Yeah, it's because they're, well, partly because we're so late. We had planned to do it in the beginning of summer, like May. But then with COVID and everybody got pushed off, um, and then by the time they were ready and could get back to work, they had to resubmit their bids because their bids were only good for 30 days, 45 days. So it was kind of a conundrum that when the numbers came back and were lower, we didn't have time to do an amendment because you have to, hey, we want to do an amendment. They have to do their paperwork. We have to take it to council, amend, you know? So one of the workshops that's not currently on your list that really, maybe when we bring it back in September, we'll add is, um, sitting down with council or even Public Works Committee first and then council and going over what all those projects were in that original map from two years ago. What's been completed, what's on our list for the next round? And kind of look forward the next five years and develop the next set of five or six projects. So that's something. I'm hoping we can start meeting with committees again because I know Public Works would have something to say about that before it goes to council.
I'm assuming, I can't remember, Oregon was probably one of our, for margin of the, in which we did get one.
So Oregon wasn't actually on our project list. The only thing is, is that it just goes, Arkansas turns into Oregon, basically. Um, and one of the things that staff's been talking about, and I don't know if any of the counselors have been thinking about it, but when we go to do the UGB tweaks, we, because we have so much development right along Oregon, it really would behoove the city to take Oregon back from the county or ask for that transfer so that the entire length of Oregon is in the city limits so that we can require builders to do what they need to do in the right of way. We can someday use it as an actual through street for a right of way.
Does that answer your question, Dale?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, it's those problem streets that we've been a little tentative of putting on to our project list that, that, you know, the funding part is problematic for us. But I, I think I'm hearing that we'll kind of venture into some of those by oversubscribing. And if they knock that one off, then we're going to have, and re-figure how we're going to fund those. Um, but if we can knock some of those off on those lit, uh, doing it that way, uh, we will solve the problem.
So one of the other things to think about in, when we come up with talking about reserve policies is if we do want to earmark money, say, they keep kicking back those streets that are not as easily done. If we do want to earmark money, I was talking to Angie today, we really need to set up a street paving reserve where if we offshoot money, it actually sits there till we can, till it builds up enough where we can add it on to a project or wait a couple of years, have it build it, and then maybe it rolls and we use a little bit of it to pay for the street we identified that the state wouldn't pay for and, and start tackling those. But when it's, when the pot of money is sitting in contract services for the streets, it could end up being crack sealing. It could be snow removal. It could be fixing broken sidewalks. It can really be drawn to a much more kind of open interpretation of what needs to be done in streets and not keep it set aside for paving.
Yeah, I'd concur with what you just said because those, if we can't get the state to fund those, those individual streets are really problematic for us and, and it's going to have to take some real pistol, discipline on our hands. And, you know, the question begs now was, would have Oregon, would it have qualified for the grant? And we could have had the state pay for that one. I, I understand why you did it. I mean, it probably was the best move. But, uh, there again, we have to, we would, we'll never get those streets paved if we don't, like you say, set the money aside, be more disciplined in talking those streets out. Thanks, Josette.
Yeah. So one of the reasons they want to do Oregon is because the last year we did Upper B. So it did connect that. So it kind of kept us going from gravel to pavement to gravel or pavement to gravel to pavement. So they're right there and we were like, man, we really want to connect those two because then it kind of ties in that whole section and gets it to a certain state where that's all the same age, so to speak. Um, so yeah, but definitely we need to use every penny the state's willing to give us. Next year, we won't make that mistake.
Josette, it's really nice. I made the loop. I went up Arkansas and Oregon and came down Louisiana. It's all nice and paved now. It's really, really nice.
Yeah, it turned out good.
Yep. Hey, anything else? Josette, are you ready for your report?
Yeah, so I don't have a huge report. I'm still, uh, finalizing some fixes at Rose Avenue. We have a handicap door that's not opening, opening right. So the manufacturer's coming out for that. And we got to reset the timer because there's no way some, some senior with a walker is getting through that door before it shuts on them. Um, that won't be good. Um, so I'm just waiting. Yeah. So I'm just waiting for, um, insurance application or insurance policies. And then we're going to sign the lease tomorrow. And then the two entities can have keys following that. Um, and we're still waiting for Felton's is getting a part because the one, one concern that the two entities had was about their refrigerator's short cycling. So they're kicking on like all the time. And our HVAC, um, person that does City Hall and does VCLC in the library, um, found that if there is a solenoid that's digital, where they used to always be manual and it was like giving a false read. And so getting those replaced so that the electricity and they only cycle on when they need to. Um, and then the building, hopefully, if the power washing company gets back to me, will be power washed before we go into curtailment, which is another thing. We're at 16.4 as a mean flow today. Uh, 14 is volunteer curtailment. Um, so we're not far off from citizens, uh, being asked to voluntarily not water or wash things and then ultimately not being allowed to water or wash things outside. Um, we have noticed we're making about 50,000, 100,000 more gallons than normal. So everyone's getting everything all dialed in with water before we shut it down. Um, and then, you know, we're just dealing with everything in the city. If you guys have questions. Dale, what's your question? I can see your face. You were going to ask a question.
Well, I was, and then I thought, nah, you guys handle it. Uh, that, that West Dock, the plywood they flipped over, it's kind of curled back up. It's a little bit of a tripping hazard that I know the guys, they're ordering some plywood. They'll get to it, but, um.
Yeah, we were waiting for the marine grade stuff. But do you think it's enough of one they need to at least go cut off what's curling? And I can put in a work order.
They put a bolt down into the, or to hold it down and that bolt or something and it popped up. You, you might have them look at it. If somebody doesn't cause a lawsuit on it.
Yeah. So it's way cheaper to send them down there to do something about it. Um, so one more thing, we did receive funds, um, that were agreed to in the settlement agreement. We did receive the signed settlement agreement, um, that's now public. Uh, someone could request it from the court. Um, and we're just waiting for the judge to sign the dismissal of the case. Um, so there's, it's been filed, but with COVID, we don't know when, um, that'll get signed by the judge. But we'll get a, a copy sent to us the minute it's signed. Um, so we did order the storm drainage equipment, uh, piping and the manholes and HPH is finalizing. We discussed a couple of tweaks to, um, incorporate better with our own system there on Knott Street. Um, so they're finalizing their design plan, but we ordered the equipment that's in the design. Um, the goal was to be done by August 31st. Our new goal, since this has taken so long, is to be done affecting the plaintiff's properties by August 31st. So our goal is to get the pipe in the ground, the manholes uncovered and recovered and before August 31st. We'll still continue to do the other parts that don't touch the plaintiff's properties, but we may, it may go over that August 31st date. But they would be able to list properties for sale by then. So that was really their concern and what they wanted most. So we still feel like we're holding our, to our word on that. It's just for it to be August 3rd and expect that in, you know, uh, 20 some odd business days or less than that even business days, um, that all of it would be completed and functioning is not realistic. But we're going to do our best.
Okay.
So the settlement's knowledge at this point?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, JR.
I think that was Dale asked the question.
Oh, sorry.
So the settlement is public knowledge at this point, or we got to wait for the judge's signed order?
Um, we have to wait for the signed order. Someone could request the documents from the court system, so. I don't know what of all they'll release of that or if they maybe won't release it till the dismissal is signed. But we're moving forward, so that's good.
Of course, every, everything we're talking on the public record right now, so as far as the press.
That's why we can say, state it is, I believe you can find out what the case was about, what the parties are planning to do, but the dismissal probably isn't signed yet. I just got that email probably at lunchtime today that it was turned in and waiting, awaiting the judge's signature.
I'd like to make one comment, Josette. I've driven down to the Dewey Pool several times in the last week or two and, and, uh, the lifeguards are doing a great job keeping the waiting pool clean and I, I was just, in fact, I watched one of the lifeguard, or lifeguard that, that was on duty help a little girl with her life jackets. So it was a good thing to see and everyone having a good time and, and, uh, just pass, just pass it on that they're doing a great job. It looks good, so.
Good.
I did fix a, there was a broken, um, rope over the, um, at the scout cabin. I, I put another end on it. So I, I fixed that last week when I was down there. But, um, anyway, um, that's about all I have. If, if any Counselor has anything to take to the August 17th meeting, you could bring it up now and I'll, I'll, I'll write it down, put it on my list.
So I do, I do want to mention two things that just came into my mind, Mayor. Uh, tomorrow, you mean, uh, Counselor Webb and Counselor Wagner, who were the two names you chose from the hat. Um, and Stephanie and I in chief are meeting with the Vernonians for Racial Justice and Equality um, to start the discussion of the resolution, uh, draft resolution that they are requesting council, uh, look at. So we're going to be doing that. And then on the 17th, I believe that the CZ Trail Group is going to do a presentation to council, um, talk about a trailhead and maybe moving forward a little more quickly. Did have a Parks Committee go-to meeting, um, where the Parks Committee members talked to the CZ Trail Group. It was a public meeting, um, and talked about their concerns and, uh, issues they had. And they did like the idea of a trailhead, um, at Anderson. So they're going to be bringing that forward to you guys on the court in a presentation.
And did you notice the, the temporary sign down there that was put up at Anderson Park this last week?
It did. It looked good.
Yeah, it's really cool. Anything else? Okay, I guess we're ready for an action item summary.
Dale, are you trying to talk?
I'm getting a, a backseat. I don't know why.
Well, I'm just saying that because JR's name keeps lighting up in this little box. Well, I'm just saying that because JR's name keeps lighting up in this little box like he's trying to talk. So before we move on, I wanted to double check, Counselor Allen is not wanting to say something.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. It might have just been movement or something, is what it's basing it on. Okay, so I'll go forward with the action items that I have for tonight. So, uh, staff will bring back the work session schedule, the first meeting in September. Um, as far as the letter to the state, um, delegation for rulemaking committee, we're going to correct paragraph two, where it says the city of Renonia is, and it needs to be the city of Renonia in the past. We're going to add a sentence for inclusion of affordable housing language and financial impact to building affordable housing. Um, staff will call in and give public testimony regarding proposed rule changes. Um, staff will double check with, um, Public Works when they will be doing Arkansas and the gravel embankment edges. And staff will put in a work order for them to double check the west dock where we put in the temporary plywood, that it's not, then fix that trip hazard. Is there anything else?
I guess not, thank you, Josette.
Sure.
And if, if nobody has anything else, I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting.
It's Counselor Webb-
Meeting adjourned. Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
You guys gotta get on the video chat part of this, it is for a meeting. The, you can see the person's reactions, and, and you can tell they're getting ready to speak, or wanting to make a motion, or you can point at them, tell them to make the motion.
Yeah, we're gonna try to-
As bad as we thought.
Okay, I'm gonna make a good attempt for, uh, the seventeenth then, Dale.
Yeah, it was pretty easy, I just had to put in an app once, once I went in there, and it just drives you right into it. There it is, there it is. Everybody's doing the finger here.
So pointer finger.
Yeah.
And I am available to help any members of council if they're having issues with their, uh, cameras on their computers.
Or if they need a camera.
Or if they need a camera, yes.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I will adjourn this, this council meeting at eight thirty-five, meeting adjourned.